Start recording.
Good morning.
Let me know if you see anything, Jim. It's it's record, it should be recording.
All right, I got six o'clock. Call the Village Board Finance Committee meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, open meeting law compliance check.
I'll fill the village board president Jeff Millie.
Here.
Trustee Jay Peca.
Here.
Trustee Gary Finch.
Here.
Trustee Dylan Newman.
Here.
Trustee Jim Hood.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, note to record, excuse me, Mr. President, oh, for the record, you do have a quorum of your village board and for the village finance committee, we have President Jeff Millies.
Here.
And trustee Gary Finch.
Here.
Tom Thomassek is ill, so he won't be attending, and so there is a quorum of the finance committee. And also note to record that the meeting, this meeting meets all requirements of the open meetings law.
All right, public comments, there is no public, move on miscellaneous matters. Scheduled date for 2026 budget workshop, village board finance for capital projects. Just want to take these in order.
Wait, what I what I wanted to do for the board, just so they get a good understanding, there's a lot of stuff you're gonna have to take home and kind of research. But in your, at the top of your packet, you're gonna see the budget notice for the 2020-25 budget. And I wanted just to point out to the board that there's 1.66 million, oh, fifty-six, that's in the proposed budget for 2020-24. And then behind there is how the numbers coincide to the 1,006.66 million dollars needed. I can tell you that the center bridge project is not gonna be 482,200, it's probably gonna be closer to 300,000, just so you know, I'm firming that number up with Brett. He's got a number on the project, I'm pretty sure I included that in your, I did, in the information, but I wanted to make sure that he's got all his, all his rock and shouldering materials, everything that's exclusive to that project, any more additional engineering. And that, the number that he's looking at, that you have, that's attached to this document, does not have what was spent already. So I wanna, I wanna get that number for you too, because that, that'll go with your center bridge amount, excuse me, the center drive amount. And then the center bridge amount, at one point, it was, when I applied for that grant, it was an eighty-twenty grant, federal government paying eighty, we pay twenty. Then it turned to a hundred percent, then it went back to eighty-twenty, and depending on how bridge projects are going throughout the nation will depend, it'll never go lower than eighty percent. But my hope is that it stays higher. When I talked to the DOT representatives today, they said not to worry, we'll get that, we'll get that bill, and I said, well, I kinda need to know sooner than later, because the board's talking about financing, so I just wanted to let you know what's happening there. Also, you know that we did the server and upgrade in the laptops for the village hall, we did the phone system. We have not done the generator, because the board's aware that we're getting additional information for the board on the generator. For the fire department, we have purchased the breathing apparatus, the defibrillators, and their computer upgrades, so that's been done so far. And keep this, this document close to you, because we are gonna go back to that, but I just wanted to show you, you know, where we're at on the 2020-25 budget. On the next, the next little packet that you have, I wanted to point out to you again that the ninety-five thousand three seventy-nine on our audited financial statement is the money that we've spent in 2020-24 for the bridge project, and what I want to get for you also is the money that the village spent in 2020-23. It's not gonna be anywhere, anywhere near the amount of the ninety-five thousand dollars, but I just wanna track every dime that the village has paid, you know, towards that bridge project. And this is mainly all engineering, the fees from, remember, you approved bills from the DOT, because there's bills from them. Illegal fees, the appraisal, all the monies that went into that. And the supporting documentation that's attached to this is what's in the financial software. The problem is, is the financial, we, they changed software as mid-year. So I want to make sure that I can get into what we had in the previous software to see expenditures, maybe there is none, but I just wanna double check that. And like I said, a lot of this stuff, board members, you're gonna have to at home, you know, kinda go over things and see if you have questions related to that. The next packet that you're gonna see is the 2020-24 budget. You can see there was no borrowing anticipated at all, and the capital outlays for 2020-24 were only thirty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars was for a loan of the DPW department, and then twenty thousand dollars, I'm, I'm almost positive, was for the fire department. I just want you to know what that packet's for. The next packet that you have is the 2020-23, and you can see once again, there's no long-term term debt allocated for that, but there was the ninety-five thousand dollars of capital outlay, that was anticipated in the 2020-23 budget. But if you turn two pages down, you can see that public works, it says page forty-two on the bottom of it, actually spent nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy, nine forty-nine, seven forty. And this was for all the roads in Hidden Lakes. I think from what Brett said, he's gonna get me the, you know, double check that number. But I, I don't understand, I don't understand how that could have happened if, if the, if the budget was only ninety-five thousand dollars and we actually spent nine forty-nine, seventy. So I, and I do wanna talk to Karen too, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention. The next budget notice that you're looking at is the 2020-22 proposed budget. Once again, there was no, no anticipated loan for 2020-22, but the capital outlay was seven hundred and forty-four thousand, and I'm assuming, which I have to double check. You can see in 2020-21, there was seven hundred and one, two thirty-eight, and they only spent two eighty-six, seven fifty-eight. That was in the budget, but they, but they, their proposed capital outlay was seven forty-four, seven hundred and forty-four thousand. And I'm assuming, we'll get to another page as it relates to 2020-21 and 2022, the board borrowed, we're getting to that page also, but the board had a significant amount of money that they had borrowed to pay for projects like that. So they wouldn't, that wouldn't make any sense for them to borrow more money if they had money. The next packet that you have, I just wanted you to see what, what some of the requests look like from the fire chief, or some of the, you know, some of his, his memos related to his budget requests. And also in there, I've asked the fire chief and the DPW director to produce a ten-year, I wonder if that was in your packet? There were, there should have been two old, oh, a, a long-term, a long-term capital equipment examples from the DPW department and the fire department. Fire department might have gone even longer than, than ten years. Is that, do you guys have, it's a capital? Yeah, cuz I, I don't see it, and I, you know, when I asked for them to be run, I had it with the budget requests. But if it's not there, I'll email them to you, because I did email them to the chief, the fire chief, and the DPW director. So they'll produce for the board a capital improvement plan, you know, going ten years into the future. Whether we adhere to it, at least you should see what their recommendation is and the status of the equipment that they have. What kind of funding they're spending on equipment is important for the board to know when you're looking at those capital projects. And, and the last documents that you have somewhat near each other, but when the board, when the board borrowed about two point nine million dollars in 2020-21, they, you can see in the first column, the three numbers totaling six hundred ninety-one thousand six twenty-eight fifteen, that's the debt that the village of Vernon had at the time. And when the board did a refinancing of the debt, there was a substantial drop in the interest rate of the loans that we had at the time. And when they did the refinancing from Baird, that's why they paid off those loans and got a lower interest rate. And you can see the three separate deposits that came in from Baird totaling the twenty-nine point five three, four ninety-three thirteen. And you can also see which one is, the road bond is the one point two million, and the note is a one point seven million. You can see the board paid off that six ninety-one, leaving the remaining balance of a million fifteen, and then there was a million two in the road project. Then you can also see what the board, this is the interesting factor, and I just wanna do a little bit more research for you gentlemen, because in 2020-20, the board had put two hundred thousand dollars in that budget to borrow, to balance that budget, for whatever would have been. And they, they also had a five hundred thousand dollar entry in the 2020-21 budget. So back then, the board had seven hundred thousand dollars of anticipated borrowing that they needed to balance those budgets, that would have come out of these proceeds. And then they also had some capital expenditures for the fire department totaling four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I know that we got the, the new ambulance, we did not get a new pickup, and they, and they did get the intercept car. And then the DPW, they also had, they had got a new truck that year, that new plow truck, and a skidster. I'm not, I have to double check on the excavator, but I just wanna, I just wanted you to see, this is, this is what was in the computer, and I wanna update it based upon the financial statements and the, the numbers that are actually in the software to see, because that, that nine hundred and forty-seven thousand that came, it transferred from the fund balance, which I'm, I'm assuming, the auditor assumed that money was in this account. But it seems, it seems impossible to have all these expenditures, you know, coming out of, it's only, there's only, you know, the, the two, the two dollar amounts on, it's two point two, six one eight, sixty-four ninety-eight. So that's something I'd, I'd like to check, Terry was not in, and I, and I wanna check with Terry, although Terry left in 2020-22. And then, like I said, we have the problem with the, the split in the software from 2020-23. None of those numbers in detail came over to the new, the new accounting system that they purchased, could not take in the numbers. Typically, when you, when you transfer from one financial software to another, all those entries are entered into the new software so that you, you do have a history. But that, the software that we purchased didn't have that capability. Yeah, so, so I just wanted to give you an overview of, like I said, I wanna do a little bit more checking on that long-term debt and what's actually in there, but the bigger factor that the board, you know, I don't know, Jeff, how you anticipate doing this, but on the first packet, where, where we as a board, and Jim, you were, you were here when we did this, the 2020-25 budget, weren't you? Okay, so the one point six million, that's something that we, you know, we need to talk about, because we, we did, we weren't, we weren't, we did not rely on any monies from the, the funding. That was something that we thought that we'd have to, the one point six million borrow for the projects. Like I said, thankfully, the numbers aren't gonna come as high as we thought on the bridge project and the center drive project, but the other, the other capital that we did borrow for, those came real close to, to the actual expenditure. So I mean, that, that's, that's the big issue, and then when you're thinking about this budget, you're also thinking about what you're gonna do for 2020-26. I can tell you, one of the, one of the fire engines is in, up by Pierce right now, because there is a significant problem with a 2012 fire engine. Alex is getting a price from them, it's, it's the frame, the rails have corrosion on them, I guess the frame is gone. On the 2012 fire engine.
Yeah, the main gear truck frame.
Yes, yes, and the anticipated cost, like I said, I know when, you know, I, I know it's gonna be steep. I mean, steep over, he said over two hundred thousand, which seems an awful lot of money to spend on the 2012 truck.
You gotta strip it down to get the frame.
Right, right.
Build the whole truck.
How much longer they anticipate that truck will be used?
Well, that's why having that capital project, you know, that, because, you know, I'd like to see, I mean, I know I had an old one for you, and, you know, while you guys are talking, oh, I do, I do have it here. While you guys are talking, I can run that for you, but the problem is, is the, the capital, Brett's never done a capital plan, which I know he'll be able to do it. The fire department's, it was pretty sophisticated, and DPW's was too, I'm just trying to think how far it went into the future. This one, the one, the example that I have for you, this is from 2020-20. So I, like I said, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't had an updated, that, that I could find anywhere. And Alex is on vacation this week, so, you know, I'll, I'll get that for you. And I'll, and I'll, I wanna run this for you guys too before, before we have to leave. But my question too is, is even though we don't know the exact dollar amount, do you want, for your next board meeting, when you're talking financing, do you want different proposals from different banks? Baird, L Os, I mean, do you want examples from all different borrowing entities?
How much is the, excuse me, how much are the charges, you mean, and that kind of stuff?
No, no, I mean, I, I think you'd wanna see everything, is, you know, what, what their, what their rates are, what, what are the closing costs, what are the costs that go into their borrowing?
Typically, is it the state the cheapest, the Maclanigle matches, whatever?
Yeah, the state has a pool that, and that's published, that's always online, that you can see. And whatever the state, you know, puts out to the public, Citizens Bank matches exactly. Baird's prices were a lot better, but there, again, too, there is more cost that goes into the Baird numbers. And there, and I'm sure there's gotta be some kind of fee that the person doing the borrowing gets, so, I'm sure, I mean, the banks have fees also, but you'd wanna, you'd wanna see all different alternatives, would you not? Because, I mean, you definitely have to borrow, I just have to find out for sure for this board, as what they anticipated in this document, what's left, what's left to be paid. I also want good numbers for you for the center bridge project, you know from the audit that there's ninety-five thousand dollars for sure in 2020-24. Although I found a few other amounts, and I wanted to talk to Karen about, you know, why she didn't include those, just to be sure, because I, all those bills I have in a folder, because I've never gone through a grant audit, but I wanna have that paperwork ready, just in case the state or the federal government says they'd wanna see our paperwork. Does that make sense? So like I said, I mean, I, I want it, there's an awful lot of information for the board, but it, it gives you a chance to go take a look at it, and then schedule another date, you know, like say a week in the, into the, you know, week from now or so, that we can talk again. I obviously have a lot of alternatives for borrowing for you, but I just want you to have a better picture of is, is there anything left, you know, which I, I just wanna make sure, with all the anticipated borrowing there was in that, in the, the two point nine million that the board borrowed in 2020-21, I just wanna make sure that that's all tied out, or you know, that, that you have a good idea of what happened in 2020-21 and what we're gonna have to do in 2020-25. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what they hear tonight, stock market went up because the feds are in anticipation of lowering interest rates?
That's what I heard too.
Yeah, so I'm guessing, kinda no use requesting rates until they do lower the.
Right. Yeah, so, and there's not, not a huge rush, I know when I talked to the project manager at the bridge project, he says, well, you can pay in a couple of years. The state will wait a couple of years for, which I can't believe, but he had said there's, there's no, the state and feds have the money, it's like, so, we'll see. I, I, I put an email into them, cuz I'd like something in writing from the state to give to the board on their, the anticipated.
And what their payment plan terms are.
Yeah, like I said, Justin said there's only a few things they've even paid for so far, and, and they've been there for months. But I guess that's typical on a, I guess that's typical on that type of a, a grant, a federal, federal funding, it is a state, it's all federal money.
Yeah, we just pay them in increments.
Right, right, so, and I did talk to Tom, Tom Thomassek, and he, he is feeling, feeling better, but I wanted to, like I said, there's a ton of information for the board to take a look at, research, and then, you know, when you have questions, you know, please call me or bring them up at the next meeting, but so the only thing that is imperative is to get several budget hearings. Because of the fact of that fraud issue at the bank, there's just a few entries that have to be solidified for August of 2020-25. Once that's done, we're gonna enter, that's the only thing that's left, every, everything else you need for that budget is in the document. And then, once we have the numbers from August of two twenty, 2020-25, we'll do the projections for, and you never use a formula for that. The projections of what we're going to spend till the end of 2022, it is important for you to know to see if there's gonna be any surplus, as it relates to the 2020-25 budget. And it'll also help you when you're doing your 2020-26 budget. The only problem, I have to, I have to be honest, is full disclosure, a lot of the entries, not a lot, entries that were put into the system to, accounts should have never gone into those accounts. And auditors, they don't, they don't do that type of detail. I can assure you what's going in there now is what's supposed to be there, but I can't assure you what's in twenty-four and twenty, I, I can't make that assurance, because when I've looked at some of the accounts, you know, so we're gonna have to do our, our best. The only, the only saving grace is I do have a document from our old software that'll give you five years of budget and actuals after, after the budget process. So you will have a document that's five years of history, which will assist the board in what should have gone into those counts, and, and those sometimes change based on what happens to the budget. But I just wanted, I just wanted to give you guys as much disclosure as I could, as it relates to the budget process. Does that make sense? So I, I, I just, a couple of things, I mean, if, I, I'm sorry, Jeff, did you want the board to ask questions, or board members, if you have questions? Like I said, there's a ton of information, and it was, you know, given to you so you could, you know, go and take a look at it. And if you, and I just wanted to let you know too, that if you go on the website, all of our financial statements are, audited financial statements are up there. I didn't wanna run them all off, because, you know, that's kind of a waste, as far as I'm concerned, cuz so much of our financial audits relate to WRS and some of the retirement issues that are mandated by Gatsby rules. So like I said, the twofold issue is to get budget workshops going, not next week, the following week, and Tom said he could do as many as three in one week and one in another. And then to get the board back to talk more about all the information that you had here, and then some additional information I wanna provide to the board as it relates to what happened in 2020-21 with this. I just wanna double check with Karen also.
I think putting this all together is gonna be confusing at first.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's.
Why is that, and what about the next year? And you probably have an answer for it, or somebody.
Oh, yeah, but like I said.
It's like we gotta refresh ourselves.
Right, and like I said, when you get this, this amount of information, which I think the board needs, I mean, at least you have it in your back pocket, and then, like I said, I, I'm gonna give you a lot of information, but I think those, especially that five-year spreadsheet that shows actuals. The other thing too, I just wanna let you know, the RFPs for refuse and recycling are due on the nineteenth of September. So your first meeting in October, you're gonna relate to the stormwater charges, you're gonna pick your healthcare, your healthcare carrier, which has been the same for the last seven years. And then hopefully, you'll pick a vendor, because it's important that, you know, to get that, you know, down clad. And I can tell you, there's only three vendors, when I did the RFP, I sent it to waste management, you know, immediately, and then as soon as I got email contacts from GFL and from Johns, I sent it to those gentlemen on the same day. And then the only thing I'm waiting for, I got them all, the up the drive, up the drive information, our private road information, our hardships, and additional, additional carts that are ordered and paid for by individuals. You know, so like I said, they're due on the nineteenth, so that, that'll give, once I get them, I'd like to copy, and that'd give you guys lots of time to look at the RFPs that come forward. Because we'll, we'll move it at the first meeting in October, if that's okay with you, Jeff?
That's fine.
And I can tell you too, and I know, I know Jay already said when it comes to discussion on a waste man, anything with refuse and recycling, he's gonna recuse himself because of his affiliation that he did have with waste management and now with GFL. But I just wanted to point out to the board, waste management is only in two communities in Waukesha County, and Vernon is, it's one. The rest, and I, and I'm gonna give that to you also, is what municipalities have what carrier? And how many other municipalities participate in the, the company recycling program out of the thirty-nine communities? Pretty up there, it's like three, one, or, it's pretty up there, it's all, just trying to think what else, that would impact the budget. I mean, gee, you're welcome to, you're welcome to listen and participate, I, I'm just giving the board an update on what's coming, just so, I just don't want the board blindsided, cuz like I said, when, and I, I'm gonna give you the RFPs, and you have the right to see them. But I know you had said right from the beginning that you wanted to recuse yourself from that discussion, but you, you do have your four colleagues that can carry the weight for you.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
I'm just trying, and we have no other RFPs that we're looking at. And like I said, it was, Jeff, if you, before we do go, if we, when, when we go back, if we could look at projects for two thousand, the, on the, on the capital outlays for 2020-25. projects for two thousand, on the capital outlays for two thousand twenty twenty-five, there were some projects that we did not fund, but we wanted to talk to the board about for two thousand twenty twenty-six. That fire station too desperately needs tuck pointing and needs to be painted. Yeah, so, like I said, I just wanted to make you a list, and I'm going to, like I said, get that updated, a capital project from the fire department, the DPW department. You also need a little list from, because I'm sure would like to get decent software that when we do a meeting, it works. I mean, it's, you know, because this is really frustrating for, I think for me, and I'm sure the board, when you're depending on equipment to work and, you know, the screen goes black and there's nothing we can, nothing we can do. The other thing too is when we lose, these desks have been here for, Jeff, what would you guess, thirty years?
Oh, I thought.
They're, you know, and if we ever have an election, they're so hard to move and so hard to take apart, so, I wanted to get some, whether you guys do it or not, I'm going to at least ask. I'm sorry, Jay?
Well, someday, if you've ever seen the Village of Washington, you know how the Village of Washington is set up? It's really nice, I mean, you can get up, you know, get up behind there and then, you know, sit and have like a nice workspace where we can, you know, actually face the people.
I think their hall is four times the size of ours, so, you know, they're
We've got to make a little
Yeah.
The problem is these mics are all tied in, so you can't move the desk because it's all tied in, or if we had maybe wireless mics or something, we're able to
That's what I'm going to get for the board is. I mean, whether you guys do it or not, that's your decision, but I want to get you all that information, because, you know, depending on what is all presented to you, that's a decision the board will have to make on what you feel is appropriate, what you feel. I mean, I know you know that we have the ordinance that locks us in on three-point-three million, which I'm sure the board's not looking at that amount of money, but
Oh, God.
Yeah. I mean, we do have the capacity to probably borrow up to fifty million if we wanted to, and I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure that's not the, you know.
We can't borrow anything over three-point-three million or something, right? We've got a referendum.
Yeah, it's probably a little more.
Bray was here, they said our borrowing capacity was almost seventy million for the village as a whole.
And some
Makes interesting.
But, I mean, so it's
Some municipalities do borrow a lot of money. I mean, Vernon's never had, never had that history. And I will commend the board back in two thousand twenty twenty-one, when they did do that loan, there was anticipated money that needed to be borrowed, and we had those loans of almost seven hundred thousand, and the money that the board saved by paying off those loans and borrowing the money when they did was a very insightful process back then.
I'll have a look. We're going to have the, and we have it this year, we're going to start next year for the referendum for the middle school in Guanego.
Next year.
Right, next year, but when does the high school go off? It's a lot bigger.
Well, it's a lot, it's a lot longer.
Forty years.
Yeah, the high school is almost off.
Almost off.
Really?
Yeah, and then
That allows, that allows us to look at borrowing money if we need to, say, look, this can protect us the same.
Yeah, yeah.
High school district does for a long time. If they do, but for right then, but if they don't
I talked to Joel over the weekend, the superintendent of school, Mr. Clark,
Yeah.
And they're not, they're not looking at any more borrowing for years. Guanego, I have to say, has been great about, even when they did the high school, they were retiring old debt at that time.
Yeah.
They've been good about, I mean, their borrowing aspects, but
They felt, they seemed to have been paying off there.
Right.
That had a thing. Yeah, so, if that goes off next year, and we're on a referendum next year or the year after or something, that should, they look, your taxes really aren't going up because this is going off.
Right.
And that's a point we can make to them too.
Right.
So, we can let them know, you know, your taxes are going down a few hundred dollars a year, or whatever.
Well, that's what you're going to be saying, because the referendum is coming, high school's coming off, but the middle school's going on, so they're kind of a wash where our taxes
Yeah, I thought the middle school was smaller.
No, I thought it's going to be about, about the same overall.
Have to look at that.
So, you won't see a huge increase with the middle school.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to look, I thought the high school was bigger. I don't know why.
I thought there was forty-five million at the high school.
Oh, yeah.
When they did that borrow, I mean, when they put the, well, when they did the renovations and they added the performing arts center and, I thought that was a forty-five million dollar referendum.
Yeah, how much they were borrowing for the middle school?
Ninety, ninety.
But they're looking at it over a longer, they're looking at it a much longer period of time than the high school.
I'll get that
Because what they did is to sell to the people, they moved it out a long time,
Right.
Because they're not going to do any building, capital projects for a long time.
I'll get that information from Tom, because it'd be good to have, to be, you know.
It could be something in our hat that if we need to borrow some money.
Right.
If we just keep the taxes close to where they are now.
Well, and it's imperative to know where we're at also, because we have to find money to pay for the fire department's wages.
I know we put that three hundred thousand in, but we're going to have to go up with another three hundred thousand.
Right, I just want to double check ARPA, because we did have a one-twenty-seven for two thousand twenty twenty-four and a four-fifty-four for two thousand twenty twenty-five. Remember that you had a shortfall in two thousand twenty twenty-four where we took one-twenty-seven out of the ARPA money?
Yeah, but we put money in for next year, because they had to have, we had three hundred, two hundred and ninety, what was it? I can't remember. They had to figure out what we were going to do with the money, and I put it, and we put it into the fire department.
Yeah, we budgeted four hundred fifty-four thousand of ARPA money for two thousand twenty twenty-five. And we do, we did make a motion, the board did make a motion to put the remainder, I just want the exact remainder amount, so you know what that amount is.
I thought it was like two hundred twenty-seven plus whatever interest
How much is it?
I thought it was like two hundred twenty-seven thousand plus whatever interest is occurring on it, so.
Maybe, but there's, so what it is, it's not the whole half a million we need.
Right.
We need two or three hundred thousand.
And that's what I might have also too. I sent it to Alex and Patrick for them to check, you know, I want their detail on their salary, you know, for the board, and you're going to need that too if you're going to do the referendum.
If you do twenty-five dollars an hour, five people, and you do it for a whole year, it comes like at one-point-one million dollars.
Right, the only thing is
A lot of those people aren't getting paid that much, so.
And then, in their breakdown, they had overtime and some other provisions. The other thing is, I think this is the first time that I learned, you know, the WRS, you know, it was always like fourteen-point-seven, all employees, you know, based on what WRS states, all the employees pay six-point-nine percent, but fire department and police departments are always at a different level. But they're even at a different level than it's published, which makes no sense at all.
No.
But I'll put that all in your packet also, so you see the full parameters. And you see in your budget, you know, that there's, God, I'm guessing fifteen firefighters, maybe twelve that have qualified for WRS.
Okay.
You know, which is rightfully so, if they've earned it, they should get it. But that's going to have an impact on your budget also.
Yeah, there are some ways we might be able to cover some of that by some of the other things going away, but we'll just have to see how that goes.
And I can tell you also, the stormwater fund was not, the expenditures were not taken out properly year after year, so that'll be fixed also.
Okay.
Just so, and you'll have full knowledge of all that, because you have to know, because if people ask you questions about that budget, you want to make sure you know what you're talking about. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
So, the big thing is, you've got to get a date when you guys can meet in the evening to come back, you know, to this, and then the finance committee needs to set some dates, not next week, the following week, to start working on the budget for the board.
Do you guys want to meet next Thursday after? Are we going to a board meeting? Just have finance.
Our board meeting
It won't be ready.
Uh-huh?
Uh-uh.
You want to do that?
Well, I can tell you the budget won't be ready.
Oh.
We're just waiting for that, that one piece from, we're waiting for an issue with the bank.
How about the Thursday after? It'll be done by Thursday after, a week from this coming Thursday.
I just wanted to let you know, Tom said he could, just so that, you know, the twenty-second, these are afternoon meetings, twenty-second, twenty-fourth, the twenty-sixth, and twenty-ninth. Tom said he could make each one of those dates. Now, if you guys want to be really aggressive, we can make each one of those dates a board, a budget, you know, budget workshop. I mean, the board doesn't go, I mean, and the board is welcome to come if they want to.
Right, and there's really just three of us that are really hot.
Right, I'm there as a liaison for you, but you and Tom, right, the three of you.
Three, that's got to get it done. So, I'm pretty open to about anything.
Yeah, I'll competitively schedule all those dates, and if something's not ready or happens, we can change it basically.
The only thing that's nice about hitting it hard in the beginning is if you get a lot done for the board, because it gives the board a chance to look at what the anticipated budget is, and then, because every year I've worked on a budget here, wages increases, that's always the last, unfortunately, that's always the last thing the board looks at, because there's so many, it's not, these budgets have, you know, fluff, you know, I mean, it's pretty tight, so, and it's not that the board doesn't feel that an employee's not worth an increase, but that's one of the last things, you know, that the board looks at.
Yeah. So, when do we, you want, when will it be ready?
Oh, these dates that he gave, the twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-ninth, those are all Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And Tom, you know, was saying like one o'clock. I mean, you don't have to do hours on end, but
Yeah, is one o'clock okay with you? Jeff, I
One o'clock is good.
So
Well, it is the twenty-second, twenty-fourth, that's only today's part, it's kind of quick to have another meeting.
Well, it is when you think about it, but I don't know, I don't know if you are going to want to bring department heads in. Sometimes when you bring a department in one meeting, sometimes they go through one or two. It just depends with what the finance committee wants.
What we can do is the twenty-second of Monday.
And if you feel you're not ready, yeah, because I'm going to have Tammy put them on the calendar, so the public's
Twenty-sixth Friday, and then the next Monday, next Friday, and
Right.
Keep going like that, and there'll be some time in between. I mean, I don't know if you
So, yeah, we study this stuff before we have a meeting, we go
Yeah, have a few days in there to get some questions answered, have her prepare things, so. So, we'll do Mondays and try dates.
That's usually the problem, unless you get started, I'll send you more questions.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm looking at this one going, oh my God, I've done this a couple of times, and I'm still going around my head.
Yeah.
So.
And they're going to use the old budget process, so it's, all those, it's so nice, because all those spreadsheets tie into the general fund, expenditures, revenues, yeah.
Changes number changes about a line.
Right, right.
So, we're going to do the twenty-second
And we'll put a tentative, yeah, we'll put a tentative date of the twenty-fourth, twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-ninth. And if you don't, if you don't use them, I mean, they, you know, the public can, you know, will put anticipated dates.
If we do the twenty-second, and it looks like we won't be ready for the twenty-fourth, we'll just do it the twenty-first.
Right, but I think especially you have to decide if you want, do you want department heads presenting too?
Sure.
Then it's no disrespect, because the fire department explains every single line item.
You'll only get that one day of the meeting.
Right.
Alex will take two hours.
And it would, it would be good to get the fire department in just on salaries alone. You know, that might take one meeting.
Yeah, that will be.
Right.
DPW usually quicker.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And parking racks, we don't have to worry too much about that year of Guanego.
And it'll be interesting to see how the numbers play out. I mean, the fact
That's your office, that's all we really have.
Right, right. I mean, there's really only four departments.
Yeah.
And I give us something, I, we need to, I need to look at my tax thing, and I'll tell you how much you're paying, you know, for a year, I need the taxes in the bottom separate.
Yeah.
And that's where I looked at it, and I thought, well, it looks like we're going to be paying more for the high school, because it's a short-term loan.
Well, the other thing that's going to help, not for twenty-six, but for twenty-seven, you'll have another thirty-six, those lots that are going to sell in the Newman Development, those lots won't, they'll be all gone in two thousand twenty-six, and probably almost all built by two thousand twenty-seven, which will help our budget, any type of, and we are getting, I can't tell you how busy my office is with developers wanting to build in Vernon. The only saving grace that we have, and it's a good one, is we don't have silver and water. So, the pressure is nothing like it is in a municipality that has silver and water.
Yeah.
And you know what, well, this spring, when we had Cal here for, I forget what he said, how much our base went up, and really did raise our increase in taxes, you know, that we already gave, wasn't that significant for the amount of money that went up.
Sure.
And the other thing Cal's aware of too is the ratio that we're at, he's going to have to do something next year, because we want to, we want to stay, we don't want to get behind on assessed values, where we were at one point, we were in the eighty percent. We're at ninety, well, we were at ninety-four during board of review, and that'll drop by the end of the year because of the price of homes.
Yeah. Yeah, we keep going up, we're not too stable.
Right. So, before you go, I just want to, I just want to give you, I want to run this for you before you guys go. And if you can think of something else, board numbers too, that you want to get to Jeff or I in regards to capital projects that you'd like to discuss, just think about two thousand twenty twenty-six also. But it'll help you more when you get, you know, the schedule or the wants, or the needs, wants and the needs of our two biggest departments, DPW and the fire department. I know the county's talking about getting new election machines, because the machines we have are probably ten years old, and I attended a webinar on the new type of machines, I don't know what they're going to go with. And the county usually pays two-thirds of the cost, which is nice, because we get, you know, we only get one-third of the cost of those machines, which is helpful, but it's not going to be a thousand dollars, it's probably ten to fifteen thousand for our four machines.
Hmm, we just got one not too long ago.
A machine?
Yeah.
We rent them.
Yeah, I thought we bought one, it was, I thought it was less than ten years ago, eh?
Yeah, no, no, those machines are over ten years, those new machines are over ten years old. But, I mean, technology's changing, so, I mean, those machines are so sophisticated that you literally could vote with your phone, but Wisconsin law doesn't allow that.
Someday, someday elections will drive through the parking lot, and a mind-reading device will pick you up and you just keep riding, driving right on.
You won't have elections AI, you'll determine it.
Right. Well, and then too, after the finance committee gets, you know, an area where you think you'd like to present at least what you have to the board, then they have the board take a look at it and see if they feel they need to, you know, talk to a department head also, because they might have questions that finance didn't even think of, I mean.
Yeah, the day that we have the department set in, it's a good day for the whole board to be there and hear it often.
Sure.
Yeah, the only thing is, you're not going to have Dylan and Jay, you'd have to do that on an evening, so Dylan and Jay could attend. Jim, when you, do you go back to work soon?
I went back yesterday.
Oh, that's, well, and
I used to get off at one-thirty.
Oh, do you?
So, I have one-thirty, two sometimes.
God, what time do you go in?
Five.
Oof.
Whatever. I like to be home early.
Do you?
You can do morning course radio.
I can, yeah.
What you probably do with the go, horse radio.
It's getting later now for summer, I just start so much later.
I tell you, being off, it really put a damper on my whole routine in the morning. I used to wake up at four o'clock, no problem, and then these past two days has been terrible.
Yeah, yeah, I started working four, five now, it's like you can't sleep before six.
Yeah. Did you have something you were going to run for?
Yes, I'm going to run this, but I don't, like I said, you'll have to let us know what, if there's anything, like I said, we'll update this, you know, capital projects until like I said, we'll, we'll update this, you know, capital projects until we, we gotta get the Fire Department and DPW, we'll get that all for you. Does that make sense? And then I'll, then I'll, and then like I said, I'll, you know, I kinda wait to see what happens with the interest rate before we call, because I'd like to call Barrett, Ellers, and several banks to get you guys different alternatives for financing, see, you know, who offers the best, because when, I mean, it's not gonna be a little amount, you're gonna have to borrow, you know.
I had a CD come due, and I'm surprised how, in a year, how much the interest rate had come down that big. And then I'm thinking, they're gonna start cutting rates, so I'm gonna buy today, so I'll buy again for another year, just because I think it's gonna go down more. You're predicting you're gonna go for one three point seven a year, so, one and a half.
That's a few fish fries.
And not even an old thing.
Um, I, did, is there anything more on the agenda that you need to talk about or want to talk about? Because like I said, gentlemen, you have a ton of homework that you have.
When are you gonna have the energy audit for, for generators?
I will talk to him, I'll call him tomorrow to see where they're at. Because I also, I hope, I hope they have good news on, the Fire Department is a priority, but ours is not working at all.
Here.
Right.
We just gotta have it working, time for snowstorms, because if we lose power and they can't get the garage doors open.
Yeah, they weren't working when that, when the flood enti-
Yeah, it's not gonna work.
Mm-mm, we had no power here at all.
And security cameras too, can't advertise when you're out of power, no security cameras.
God, when they're working, they're great, which is all the time now, because, you know, we switched that and, oh, that's one thing we have to add, because we didn't budget for that, but we did spend the money, that's seven, another seven thousand. Well, I'll record the motions for adjournment, and then I'll run these for you real quick.
All right.
So you're gonna need a-
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alan, favor?
Aye.
Post, meeting adjourned.
What about finance?
Alan?
That was the village board, now I need to for finance.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance committee.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Okay.
In favor?
Aye.
So give me two seconds, guys, I'll put this to you right away.
Boy, I have to refresh myself on all of this, and the fact that we adjourned, this is the worst part about the laptop.
Most time consuming.
Yeah. Frustrating, no, it's frustrating.
I gotta pull out my stuff from last year, it's usually got notes written in there explaining some of this stuff, it's like, what did we do, yeah?
Well, I don't know, the worst thing, the worst thing is coming to things, like, let's say, a major piece of equipment.
We need the software.
You know, a major piece of equipment, or, yeah.
Oui, up here?
Nope, I'm going to-